Yes. Good afternoon. I would like to call this school board briefing meeting to order. The time is approximately 10 after 2:00. And we will begin with the executive services, Policy 1.1A, Community Involvement. Mr. Martin and Dr. Graham.
Ms. Dozier, Board Members, this is simply the revision to the policy concerning Board Advisory Committees in order to include the Equity Diversity and Advisory Committee. As a Board Advisory Committee, you'll see the revisions on Page 2 to include the EDAC in the list of committees, and then on Page 5 to add the EDAC with its terms with respect to membership and description of its purpose. So that's the revision of this policy. As part of this action, the Board would also be deleting Policy 1.19, which is specifically with respect to the EDAC and its operation, because now the EDAC would be under the operation of this policy. Happy to answer any questions.
Board Members, does anyone have any questions or comments on this issue? Would anyone like to ask Mr. Martin or Dr. Graham anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then when can we expect this to come before us for a public hearing?
At the July 29th meeting.
Okay. All right. Having that, we will move to the next item on the agenda.
May I make one comment?
Yes, certainly.
I just want to remind you, when we first talked about this, that EDAC fully understands and is supporting this move. I did tell them that I would ask the Board, and I think I mentioned it, but I want to mention it one more time, that when it comes time to make appointments, that it is the desire that the people who are currently on EDAC be allowed to be in the first round of people assigned. There are still some openings there, but that they would have an opportunity to continue their service as an advisory to start that transition. So I just wanted to put that out there again.
All right. Board Members, are there any questions to Dr. Graham and to that comment that she made?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the purchase agreement for the investment of sinking fund deposits for Certificates of Participation Series 2011A. I believe we have Dr. Desamore and...
With us today, Mr. John Ford, one of our financial advisors. So Mr. Ford is here to talk with us about the opportunities that we have in front of us to save some money, which is always helpful. Mr. Ford, thanks for being here.
It says Jerry Ford, so we need to correct that. It's John Ford, I believe Jerry's son.
Today, we had multiple places to be, so we had to divide and conquer.
I hope you're not going to conquer us. I hope you're not going to conquer us. Welcome. Please go ahead.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. In 2010, the school district issued a tax credit bond known as a Qualified School Construction Bond in the amount of about $27 million. And unlike a traditional bond, the school district also has outstanding where the principal amortizes and you pay a little bit off every year. This bond pays all at maturity. And each year between now and maturity, you are required to pay a portion of the principal into a sinking fund. And that sinking fund then accrues interest. Well, because interest rates are so very low, that sinking fund is earning very little interest. And we have the opportunity to do what we refer to as a reinvestment transaction or enter into a forward purchase agreement with a financial institution to earn a little bit more interest on that sinking fund. And over time, that can help to lower the district's sinking fund payments and save you a decent bit of money. You have, right now, about $5.5 million already invested, and each year, you are paying about $1.8 million into your sinking fund. By going into this reinvestment transaction, we believe that you can lower your annual sinking fund payments by approximately $400,000 a year. And that would equate to about, to between $4.5 and $5.5 million in total savings over the life of the Q-SQIP. We believe that this is an appropriate time to pursue that and enter into that reinvestment transaction. We have not previously recommended this because we wanted to make sure that the district met the very, very strict proceed spend down requirements associated with this type of bond, and they have. And we believe, therefore, that this is the appropriate time to move forward. Are there any questions on the Q-SQIP reinvest?
Board Members, do you have any questions of Mr. Ford?
I just have one question I may have missed. When is it, when does it mature? What is the year?
Final maturity is on June 1st of 2026.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Board Members, or comments? When, Dr. Desamore, when do you anticipate that you would bring this forward if we give direction to move forward with this?
Right, we were just talking about that. What we're going to do is look at the deadlines for each of the next agenda items coming up, but we anticipate it probably will be August. We'll try to do sooner if it's advantageous for us to pull the trigger, but August is what we're looking at.
Okay, all right. Board Members, I know that what Dr. Desamore and the superintendent are looking for today are some direction from us. I will start with you, Mr. Armstrong. Do you wish to proceed with this?
Absolutely. Anything that's going to be able to save the district money, I'm all for.
Ms. Morgan?
I support it. And I support it also.
And I support it as well. So, Dr. Graham, you have your direction by the Board. So thank you, Mr. Ford. Tell your dad that we've moved forward and we didn't eat you up.
Wonderful. I have one more item to tell you about, if you have time.
Please proceed.
In addition to the reinvestment of the Q-SQIP, the district has other types of debt outstanding under its master lease. It has the 2005A series of Certificates of Participation that you originally issued in the amount of about $108 million, and those mature every year through 2028. They include an optional call feature that would allow you to refinance those bonds or those certificates at your pleasure, starting on August 1st of 2015. We have the ability to lock in low interest rates today and call those bonds in what is referred to as an advance refunding and generate savings today of about $5.5 million. And because of those low interest rates, we would like your direction to put together a syndicate of underwriters and move forward with the refunding of the 2005A COPs to generate that savings. Are there any questions that you have on that?
Board Members, do you have any questions? So what you're saying is you would take the 2005 COPs that we, when we went out for that, and you would basically be refinancing that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Just like you would a mortgage.
Okay. And that would be, so you're anticipating that we would get a greater or a lesser interest rate than we have now? Is that what you anticipate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. What is our current interest rate on that? Because I know at the time, it was pretty good.
They range, and the stated coupons on your 2005 COPs go from about 4% to 5%.
Okay. And what do you anticipate that we would be able to get if we went out for this?
I believe that you'd be somewhere in the 3.5 to 3.25 range.
Okay. So a 1 to 2-point savings percentage? Okay.
So the present value, the value in today's dollars, of your savings over the length of the transaction would be somewhere around $5.5 million.
Okay, so the savings would be about $5.5 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now is that, is that over the entire time, or is that per year?
No, ma'am. That is, that is the value today of all of the savings.
Okay.
Over time, it's about a half a million dollars a year.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other comments or questions, Board Members, of Mr. Ford?
I like that. I support it. Thank you.
Okay, that's basically what we need to give some direction on that. So Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Fisher has weighed in. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
I support it.
Mr. Armstrong, excuse me. All right, I think you have direction. Dr. Graham, do you have anything that you want to say on that?
Just thank you for supporting it, because we need to save the money.
Mr. Martin, would you like to make any comment on it?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Tell your father, unless you have anything else, that you did a good job. All right. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Dr. Desamore.
See you later.
I think you're up again, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
You are.
We're back with the 2015 budget. I have a PowerPoint. If they'd switch it up on the screen. This is a continuation of the information that we started when we last got together at the Budget Workshop on June 3rd. We went over some information at that time, and there were some questions that you all were left with that we said, okay, we'll come back on the 24th and continue to discuss. So we're back with the information that you have requested. Just a second, see if the...
I just want to be sure all of you, there were two, I want to be sure you have the PowerPoint that's named "Final."
Okay. Where do we find that? In the archives?
The Board Presentation folder.
The Board Presentation, under Boardroom. Briefing?
Yes.
Final?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. I'll wait a minute. Same, we're not going to open it. All right, let's try this. Let's see. Okay, there we go. All right. Does everybody have it up?
Everybody said?
Yes. Okay. We're ready to go.
Wonderful. All right. So the last time we were together, we did give you a list of requested position changes, and that list of requested position changes was given on June 3rd, but then also part of the briefing backup material that you received for June 24 as well. So when we went through those positions last time, remember, for our department changes, we discussed the position change cost of $2.8 million. And we had said that we would reduce other places in the budget in order to cover the costs or substantially recover the costs of those positions. So the total reduction in department base and project budgets that we reduced in order to partially cover the cost was about $2.5 million. And so the net cost of the position changes that are on the list that you have received is about $300,000. And that $2.5 million, again, comes from different department base and project budgets. Base budgets are really just the discretionary money that departments have from day-to-day to spend, and then project budgets are specific projects that departments have to conduct day-to-day business. And the reductions that we made to those for next year was $2.5 million. The bulk of that really was in the transportation area. About a little over $1 million were reduced in transportation in their base budget because of the fact that we were reducing the sub-cost within that area in order to fund the positions that we were setting up there. Then, as you go to the other department changes, we had requests for equipment, increases to base budgets, and new projects at departments that totaled about $2.3 million. In order to fund those, we reduced some countywide expenses to the tune of about $2 million. The major portion of those reductions were in uniform expenses. We were budgeting, we found as we looked, we budgeted more in uniform expenses for our employees than typically what we would use throughout the year. So we were able to reduce that by a substantial amount, about half a million. And then also, within electric costs, we noted, we found that we were able to reduce that budgeted cost as well. So those are the substantial reductions there. So the net cost of the other department changes that we were making also is about $300,000. So the net impact that we're talking here, as you can see, is about $600,000. So as we talk about, in general, the superintendent's organization, there were 12.5 positions that were eliminated at a savings of $970,000. Those eliminations were noted on the large department list that you received that noted all new positions, reclasses, and eliminations, but then there was also just a specific page just on eliminations that we included for you as well. So those eliminations were specifically listed at $970K. The proposal is actually to add another 12.5 positions in the general fund as department-based positions, and then 5.5 positions in other funds, which are grant-funded, that are department-based. And then the other additions that you see on that list really are school-based positions and transportation. The superintendent, with her organization that we're presenting now for FY15, what she wanted to do is to make sure that we structured the organization for academic achievement and that we were structured to provide customer service to all of our schools and departments while still maintaining efficiency. So what you see in terms of the request in front of you is the reflection of that, that each division head, each assistant superintendent felt was what needed, was felt that that was needed inside of each individual division in order to structure it, to achieve the goals that the superintendent had set forth. So each of us really had a long-term vision in mind as we set forth the positions that we were requesting as far as changes and new for this upcoming year. And the FY15 budget, as it is laid out in front of you, is the reflection or the fruition of that work between us and the superintendent. I think at this time, Dr. Atkins would like to share a little bit of information with you on his organization. If you recall, for June 3rd, he was not able to be here during that discussion, so there are a couple of things that he wants to share with you.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Yeah, Dr. Desamore is correct. I would like to just share just some brief items with you as it relates to a couple of the changes that we're doing. In order to do so, what I'd like to do is refer you to the organizational charts specifically. We'll start with Human Resources, which is located in your packet. First of all, what we are trying to do is reorganize Human Resources and that whole function to more closely align with our business processes. We, as you know, we've implemented a new platform, PeopleSoft. And this platform, we actually were designed and continue to be designed and organized around the old platform, but our business process is...
Let me interrupt you just for a minute. It's the Operations Division, which is the third set, and it's Page 2 of the Operations Division is where he's going to begin. Sorry.
Thank you.
They were looking. I wanted them to hear what you were saying.
Anyway, just backing up, again, what we are trying to do is to organize ourselves in a fashion that makes us more efficient as an organization in terms of business process and business flow. In addition, we are focusing on what has been clearly identified as a board priority, which is in the area of recruitment and compensation. So one of the major changes that we have is, you have, of course, the Director of Professional Standards and Equity. That stays pretty much the same, although we have a small cost savings in the reorganization there. The Director of Staffing and Talent Management is mostly the old personnel or what's currently thought of as personnel, although we did shift some of those folks out of that department into the newly created department, which is the Department of Compensation and Recruitment. So back to Staffing and Talent Management, that particular piece is going to be more organized in terms of taking care of the compliance issues, making sure that we are doing a good job with retention, particularly as it relates to credentialing of the employees, making sure that all the normal employee actions get taken care of in a very efficient manner. The new department, Director of Compensation and Recruitment, is going to focus on going out and doing a world-class job of recruiting the very, very best talent for this particular school district. This is going to be a real focus. I think with the number of folks that we hire every single year, this should be a major priority of this district. Ultimately, it is the teachers that we put in front of our students is where the real business of the district gets done. So this is a focus of this particular department. In addition to that, there are some other things that we would really like to do that I think that would really bring us into more of a, more of an industry standard in terms of job descriptions, job studies, and salary schedules. I think there's a lot of work that we can do there. One example that we have discussed is the creation of an exempt and a non-exempt salary schedule. I think we could, we could certainly realize some cost savings there because we have some employees that are currently on our salary schedule, in confidential salary schedule that, under Fair Labor Standards Act, would be classified as exempt, and that would be exempt from overtime. In order to do that, you have to do a good job in terms of doing a proper job study and a job analysis. I think that also the Board has requested job descriptions and organizational charts be in a very concise, organized, consistent fashion across the district, and I think we've been doing this over the years, and we have some inconsistencies that we need to clean up. And in any world-class organization, does job studies on an ongoing, in an ongoing manner. We haven't had the bandwidth to do this. This will give us the bandwidth in order to accomplish that task. Slight change with the Director of Insurance and Benefits. The compensation piece is going to be more of a focus of the Department of Compensation and Recruitment, and therefore would shift over to that, that area of responsibilities. So those are the changes, in a nutshell, in the work group that would be considered Human Resources.
Board Members, do you have any questions about that of Mr., of Dr. Atkins? I do. I have a couple of questions. When you are looking at the Director of Staffing and Talent Management, there's, could you, can you tell us why you need a director for that position? Could it, you know, why would you not use a coordinator or even a, you know, a TOA in that position?
What's a TOA?
Teacher on assignment. Thank you.
First of all, the responsibilities of that position are enormous. It actually supervises one of the larger depart, well, the largest department within Human Resources. So if you think of personnel right now, it would be that particular department primarily, with the exception of two analysts and two specialists, or two analysts and two clerk specialists that would be moving over to recruitment and compensation. So that's one. In terms of the responsibilities of that position, your FTE reporting, all of your compliance as it relates to certification, you know, that is, that is a multimillion-dollar proposition. When we have FTE audits, this is the person who is directly responsible for those audits and making sure that that work gets done. So I consider this a very important integral position in the district. Actually, overall, if you look at kind of the history of that work group, you know, we've had, we've had directors over that, really, in our entire history, it's been the Director of Personnel. That's pretty much what that position would be. And during that same period of time, you've had other positions that have served as an executive director over that position. I myself was Executive Director of Human Resources and then Chief of Human Resources. And if you, you know, George Anna McDaniel was the director in that position. So it's, it's a very, very important position, supervises the largest department in the Human Resources unit.
Okay, so this person would answer to whom?
The Executive Director of Human Resources.
Okay. So, and primarily, I see the Executive Director of HR. So this person would answer to that individual, and are you saying that, that, I'm trying to get a visual on the, on the organization chart. So all of the people that are answering to this individual, then how many people are actually answering to the Executive Director of HR?
The Executive Director of HR would have, I believe, 11 personnel specialists, two clerk typists, two personal analysts, a, and a manager.
And all of those answer directly to the Executive Director of HR?
I'm sorry, to this Director of Staffing and Talent Management. And then the Executive Director of HR would, the Director of Insurance and Benefits, the Director of Staffing and Talent Management, the Director of Recruitment, Compensation and Recruitment, and the Director of Professional Standards would report to the Executive Director of Human Resources.
Okay, all right. I guess I want you to explain to us and justify why we're putting in all of these directors opposed to coordinators for these positions. That, that is a question that I have been asked by several people. And so if, that's an explanation. Let's move down to the next one. The Director of Compensation and Recruitment. Why do you need a coordinator, I mean, a director opposed to a coordinator or a TOA for that position?
Okay, so the first one, you want me to speak to Compensation and Recruitment?
Correct.
Okay. I think that the skill set required to do that position is, is, I think it's director-level work, first of all. In order to attract somebody that is going to go out and be able to do the job that we're asked, we're asking somebody that has that level of experience and, and work behind them. In addition, they're going to supervise a small staff, albeit a very small staff. They also have to interface quite frequently with principals as, at least an equal, and this, this is actually an equivalent position in terms of, on the salary schedule. There's two levels of director. There's a 14 and a 15. A principal is considered a 14, and this position would be considered a 14, which is the lower-level director position. So it would be considered like a comparable to principal.
Okay, all right. So basically, what you're saying here is this individual is going to have to be working very closely with principals.
Right.
And they do need to be an equal in order to have that respect and that, that status in order to be able to function properly.
In my opinion, yes. I mean, this is a person that principals have to count on to recruit teachers for them.
All right. What about the one we just talked about? Will that, will that person be working with principals as well?
Staffing and Talent Management? Yes, yes. Again, very much like the Personnel Director does right now when it relates to hiring issues, after the recruitment issue, hiring, but also credentialing, scheduling, like, for example, if you're a principal and you're trying to hire an individual for a particular position, and, you know, that position has to make sure, you have to make sure that the credential, the certification matches up with, with what that person is supposed to teach, so that we don't get ourselves in a, in a situation where we get audited, an FTE audit from the Department of Education. And speaking of the Department of Education, this is the person that works directly with the Department of Education to make sure that we're in compliance from an FTE perspective with our teachers, instructional staff.
Okay, all right. So basically, what you're saying, you are saying that all of these positions are going to make the, make this department run more efficiently, more effective, more professionally-run, and we can, we can look forward to not having any more of these situations where documents get lost in the Personnel Department, and teachers say they have to refile stuff because it got lost. It's going to be so efficient that none of this is going to occur.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I really believe that this is a work group that you all will be proud of when we're, when we're done. I really believe that.
Board Members, do any of you have any questions? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, just a quick question. So compensation, coordinator compensation is being funded by Race to the Top money. So that position will be there, that's a temporary job?
That's a temporary job. It'll be funded through Race to the Top, and then we will evaluate the effectiveness of that position while it's being funded through Race to the Top to determine what we will do for FY16. This is, this is something that I feel really needs to add value to this organization, and as I feel with Race to the Top and TIF, TIF is another, it's an opportunity, the Teacher Incentive Fund is an opportunity for us to use grant dollars to study how effective positions are. And then what we do is we evaluate that effectiveness and determine, is this something that we want to continue or not? So anybody taking that position would be informed, this is a grant-funded position, will be funded for one year, and that will be evaluated, because I will, we will have to come to you at, on FY16 and justify that position to you if the grant funding goes, the grant funding obviously is going away, so we're going to have to come back to you and have that conversation.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I fully expect that you're going, you know, you will challenge me, as rightfully so as you should, and justify why you need this position for FY16 based on data.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, and I did discuss this with Dr. Graham, but I was actually talking about sustainability with the, with these positions in these departments. And so we're looking at a $600,000... And so we're looking at a $600,000 impact, fiscal impact for this organization, reorganization. And how can we project or predict what the costs are going to be when the grant funding goes away? And there is data that, that tells us that we do need to keep those positions. And it's working so efficiently and so effectively that we are ticking along just like we ought to be.
I can give you an example of a piece of data that I think we should look at. We have, as you know, we've implemented teacher, well, exit survey for our employees. Okay? That's one piece of data that I think we need to be looking, looking at very carefully. The other thing is that we need to be looking at retention rates. I mean, teacher retention in this district, as it is across the nation, has been an area of concern. And I believe that if we are recruiting and paying individuals as we should and putting forth a great recruitment and retention effort, that that ought to play out in the numbers, that we ought to be able to come to you at, at the end of next year and show you some data that shows that these positions are adding value.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong has a question. Have you, I'm sorry, were you not through?
No, no.
I thought you were through.
That's okay.
You'll hold your question.
So, so then when we're looking ahead, then for fiscal year '16, when you come to us and say, in order to maintain this organization, it's going to cost us, is there some prediction or some idea of what that's going to look like? I'm assuming that this is a $600,000 a year?
I think what I, like, an example would be this. If I, if we could demonstrate that we have an improvement in our retention, okay? I can clearly connect that to a cost savings in the district. I mean, that's a 15,000 to 20,000 per individual cost. I mean, you know, it's a multi-million dollar replacement cost that we go through every single year. And if we could put a dent into that, we could easily pay for these positions.
Right. And that's really what I was getting at, because people in the community have been asking those kinds of questions, and that's really what I wanted to hear you say. Thank you.
And I really think that, that because we haven't had an effort really spearheading at, at recruitment, that we've had to make hires late. And when we make a late hire, it's typically not a good hire. And then you're at it again the next year.
Right, exactly. Are you through?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Armstrong?
This is really not a question. It's just kind of jumping off what you're saying right there with the tension retain, the teacher retention. And to me, this is something that I can support, because Doc Atkins, we've both discussed this very thoroughly. And I'm not sure if a lot of people actually know how much it costs us every year for teachers that leave this district. And I believe just teachers alone, I think we figured out one day, it was around 7.5 million?
That sounds about correct, yes. I mean, if you, if you think about, you could lose, you do simple math, you look at the number, you take, you know, 500 teachers and multiply it by $15,000, and, you know, that's close to what, what you're talking about. And then you have other employees as well. It's not just instructional unit. I mean, we have to do a better job with administrators and with skills trade, skilled trade, even bus operators.
Well, and again, there's another one that we've discussed. We added it up in our support personnel. I believe it costs us around four to five million in turnaround.
Yes, yes.
It's a little lower, but, you know, you're roughly talking altogether, we're spending on the average around 10 million, 12 million annually. So if this is something that's going to help us with the retention and saving these, you have people from going out the door continuously, I think it's something that I could definitely support, because that's costing the district a lot of money and it's costing our students a lot of money, because these students depend on seeing those teachers year in and year out.
Right.
So I think it's well worth money being spent.
The other thing is that if we could do a better job with, you know, retention in general, I mean, I've, I've talked to you all about the research as it relates to how much a teacher improves in particularly the first year, the second year, and so forth. And replacing that teacher is a costly proposition. If you read Darling Hammond, 2010, there is a study Rivkin, Hannesek and Kane that produces, that's where I found the figure, was in her book, but that's the study, and I went to that later. You know, it's $38,000 to $48,000 to replace an experienced teacher. If you, if you look at some of the work of Levin, who put out a study in 2006 from Cambridge, and in that study, or I'm sorry, Columbia University, in that study, he was looking at the effectiveness of teacher education institutions. And, and teachers coming out of teacher colleges are not nearly as effective as somebody who has time in the role. So if we hire somebody, we train them over the course of the year, they're must, much more valuable to us than, than somebody that we're just pulling in off the street. So we, we, it just, it's, it's a, it's a huge, it's an upfront investment that, that is a large figure when you look at it, 300,000, 600,000. But if you look at the ramifications down the line, it becomes multi-million dollars if you don't do a good job of that. And now I'm not even talking about the impact of, of students in the classroom, which is what this is about. I mean, think about, I remember we were looking at a situation involving Ms. Valeris's school at Cypress Lake Middle School that started, I think started or ended there, I can't remember, but we looked at, at teacher turnover that impacted literally, I want to say, four or five schools in one year and ended up impacting the education of hundreds of students. That's because, you know, one turnover of a teacher led to another disruption, led to another, led to another. So we're trying to stop that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I continue?
Thank you.
Okay. I wanted to move to facilities. We're looking at really a new work group, which is, which is really Facilities Management, because we have today, we have maintenance, we have construction services, we're not building schools the way that we've needed to build schools in the past, although we certainly know that there is a need out there to do a better job with handling our capacity and, and getting ready for future growth. The first change is we have Coordinator for Process Evaluation and Improvement. This is a position that we've, we have a person in place today that is monitoring GPS and, and inventory control and a lot of things that I think are going to keep us out of trouble and also save us a lot of dollars. This person is, is going to continue on next year as Coordinator, Process Evaluation and Improvement. This is a very difficult, time-consuming job, but I believe that it, it does help us in, in really making sure that we're making the most efficient use. We've got folks that are, 160 individuals that are, are all over this district helping us out, and we need really effective management of those employees. And then I'm speaking of the Maintenance Department, and we've got a very dynamic director who is out there in the field. He's a hands-on guy and really needs some help in this area to help, help him make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to do and doing it in the most efficient manner. And that's what that position is all about, Coordinator, Process Evaluation and Improvement. In addition to that, we, we are changing the focus of our construction services. As you know, we're with the, the ending of the Dunbar Project and the Tice Project, we have a new focus there. First focus would be, as it said, facility development and programming. This is looking at our buildings, making sure that the, the building configuration meets the programming needs and with, and this can be, you know, a lot of different things, anything from evaluating a facility for the, can we use this as a pre-K facility? Can we, can we use this particular space as an ESE classroom or not? Because if you look at the fish capacity, fish capacity is based on, you know, looking at, at rooms, and we can put 18 kids in that room, but, but if you look at what our needs are, the needs vary because of our student population varies. So this position works very carefully and closely with Mark Moore to make sure that our programming needs are met. We also, as, as we're all well aware, we continue to grow 15 to 1,600 students predicted for next year. They're going to have to go somewhere, and we may need portables for that. And so this, this department will be responsible for that as well. We also have large-scale projects that, that will continue to need to be done as a part of the rotation schedule, such as a re-roofing of a major building, or we have like Riverdale, the plumbing project, I think, I know Mr. Armstrong is, is familiar with that one at Balatune of about 1.2 million dollars. Those major projects need to be properly managed, and this department would do that as well. And then we have challenged them with taking on an energy initiative. We want to be the best in the state in terms of how we utilize our facilities and how we manage energy. We have made some significant reductions in our cost per square foot in terms of energy, but it's not good enough. We want to be in the top 10 of the state. We're not there. So part of them will be working with maintenance to make sure that some of our projects like HVAC, lighting and ventilation, that these projects are managed well and make this a very energy-efficient district. So that's, that's going to be the focus of that particular department. The Director of Safety and Security, this is a new, new, actually, I should say, we're bringing it back in a little bit different form. Honestly, what I found over the course of this last year, that where people are in, in this area, they've been scattered and for a variety of reasons, none of which I, I agree with. I think that we need to have a coordinated effort here in terms of safety and security. This is a department that would oversee, for example, the response to a major emergency such as a hurricane. They also would, would coordinate our safety drills, our SREF inspections, making sure they were ADA and OSHA compliant. Also, you have to, have to coordinate the surveillance and security protocols district-wide. That department right now is kind of off by itself with, with Mr. Hayhurst in the Security Department. But it makes sense to have all of this together, led by one individual with a, really a vision for safety and security across the district. So, so that's the formation of this, and I think that's a good thing to have somebody that that's their focus in this district would be safety and security. Director of Planning and Growth and Capacity, Mr. Mora, would be working very, as he continues to, very closely with these individuals and would be part of the Facilities Management work group within Operations.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have none.
No?
Thank you.
You were just talking about, all right, I'm looking here on page two of the Operations Division, Facilities Management, and you've got a Specialist for Safety and Fire Protection? Okay. And then you've got, you've got the Director for Safety and Security. How do those, do those have anything to do with one another, I guess, is my question?
Yes, they, they do. I think that in, in the case of the Director of Safety and Security, this person would oversee the safety components of the district and in addition to that, the security components of the district. The Specialist Safety and Fire Inspection are individuals that go out and inspect our buildings, making sure they're SREF compliant, making sure that, that, you know, most recently we had some press about the fire drills, but making sure that those are being monitored and so forth. But most importantly, are making sure that we have safe buildings that are compliant. That's, that's part of their job. The other--
I think we have a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I see part of what is leading to some of the confusion.
Okay.
And I'm looking at the chart that, that Mrs. Dozier and I both have.
Let me explain the chart that we're, we're looking at. At the top, it says Operations of Division, Facilities Management Organization Chart Proposed for '15, and it's page two.
Mm-hmm.
And, go ahead.
Date, May 14th.
And it should, what you should have is the newest, it's page seven, dated 5/29.
Okay. Because I don't see the Director for Safety and Security on here, and I don't think I have that, so.
I wonder if I left that in my office.
Looking at is the page seven.
Right.
Okay.
And if not, I believe it's attached, it's part of your briefing agenda. I believe it's there.
All right.
Let's do that.
It is.
Let's go to the briefing agenda.
Bookmark. Get your bookmark and go down to the Operations Division and find page seven.
Thank you.
And part of the thinking here in terms of why they're together, I mean, students that are secure are, are safe. So it's, it would, it's a, a department that is, is focused on the safety and security of, of children, making sure that we have not only safe facilities, but we also have safe processes and protocols that exist in the district.
Seven.
Okay, I didn't have it.
Thank you.
You didn't have it?
No. So now I need to do what you all are doing, which is? Okay, wait. I'm trying to get it where I can have my little bookmarks back over here to the side. Presentations? Okay. Okay, oh. All right. And now this is under?
Operations. Okay. I see it now. Page seven. Thank you.
Is that what we are, is that what it's called? No.
Yeah. That's, that, that's better. Now you can understand what you're saying.
I don't, just a minute.
I don't know why, a while ago it was taking me directly there, and now it's not. It's, I don't understand that. Actually, it looks like page eight here.
Hit the plus sign on it. There we go. Okay. Wait a minute. Operations. Okay, good. All right, I'm all set. Apologize. Yeah.
And it's page eight. Yeah.
Took me back there. Okay.
Hit the plus one more time.
Hit the plus. There we go.
Scroll down. Proposed.
Proposed.
And then page seven. Just scroll down.
Okay. You want me to leave this one?
No, we got it. No, this is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
There it is.
So basically, these sheets that we're working from are no good anymore.
Right. We sent an updated one, so apparently something happened, because there's a 5/29 and there was a five, whatever the date was you had on the bottom.
Okay. Evidently, well, these are the ones that we were sent, and I thought that we were going to bring back to the table today. And I think that's, that's where the confusion is. I think all of us brought back this hard copy instead of, we didn't get a new hard copy of it, and I think that's where the confusion lies. So--
And if the hard copy's easier, there's one right there.
Okay. Actually, this is, I think this is easier, but go ahead. You can have that.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry.
Not a problem at all. Did I answer all your questions?
I, I think you did. Now that we have the right chart, it makes sense. It was, you know, there was something on the other chart that was just sitting out there, and it didn't answer to anybody.
Oh, yeah.
And it was like, why is that there? You're talking about a position that they answered to, and that position wasn't there, so now it makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. The job descriptions haven't changed, it's just the way the chart's laid out.
Correct.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have any questions?
I just have one on, on this same chart, which is page eight here, on the electronic copy, under Coordinator Security, Supervisor, Security Surveillance, and then Technician Security and TV Video Surveillance, Surveillance Four. Are they all located in the same place, or are they?
Well, actually, and I'll just speak to the current organizational chart, the, the current Coordinator of Security is, is Mr. Hayhurst, and he's, he's housed in-- Coordinator of Security is, is Mr. Hayhurst, and he's housed in a section of the building that is close to where the folks are with Supervisor Security Surveillance and the Technicians. The, they're all down there in the blue wing. And then Greg Lindsey is the Supervisor of Security Surveillance, and then the Technicians work directly for him, and these are the folks that go out and, and monitor and also install and troubleshoot our, our surveillance cameras across the district.
Thank you. And there's four of those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. You want to continue?
That's, those are the highlights I was going to cover with you today, are basically the changes in Facilities Management and HR. The other, the other departments are relatively small in terms of the changes that are occurring. So I, I know that Dr. Graham and Dr. Decemore's covered those for me well last time, so unless there are further questions, that's, that's all I plan to do today.
All right. Board members, do you have any more questions of Dr. Atkins before we let him out of the hot seat?
Thank you, it's all becoming much clearer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't you glad you weren't here last time? We might have had more questions.
Really?
If you sit there long enough, you might think of some more.
Run, Dr. Atkins, run.
That kind of like, run, Forrest, run. Okay, Dr. Decemore, continue, or are you going back to the PowerPoint now?
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Just a minute to get back to the PowerPoint.
So just one last look at the detail of all the position changes. It's included in your packet. We've broken it down even more, as I said earlier, by eliminations, and then the total list additions as well, and then the total list of everything, reclasses, additions, and new positions. And we went through the whole organization list, Kristi and I, last time, and then as Dr. Atkins just did for you now. So just one last call, is if there's any questions related to the new organization, which is really the linchpin of what the department budget piece is for FY '15.
Mr. Armstrong has a question, and I'm going to have one after this.
This is actually fairly simple. Looking back now, a lot of the money is due to transportation as well, is that correct?
Yes, that, yes, that's correct. There were, there were, I believe on your list, 45 bus driver positions and 15 ed. para positions, and that was the bulk of the cost, offset largely by the reduction of the base budgets in transportation that would have gone to sub-costs, yes.
Does that bring us compliant now? I know some of these positions that we needed last year and we did not fill with some other issues that was going on. Does, will that bring us up to par now?
When you say compliant, yes. What we're looking at, at this point, is that based on the amount of bus drivers that we are adding, that we're going to have one driver for every single route. So every route that's out there, every bus that's driving, there'll be a regular bus driver assigned to that route.
So we needed those drivers. It was a mandatory must to be compliant.
In order to have that number of routes and buses, yes.
Thank you, ma'am, that's all I needed.
Any other questions? Ms. Morgan?
That was my question.
Oh, yes. So, we're balancing the budget using increased class size. So, can we just talk about that a little bit?
We can, yes. So at one of our briefings several months ago, we talked about the need for additional space and the fact that we were not building any schools, at least within the, within the five-year plan, we have plans for no schools. But we knew that we were going to have, or estimating to have, another 1,300 kids in the district for this year. So the discussion that took place at that time was that if necessary, we would be increasing the class size up to, we would leave K through two alone, if you recall, so we were going to leave K through two as it was. So we were banking on leaving K two at 18 per class, and then if need be, based on where the students showed up and how many showed up, that we would go to a plus three of class size if we needed to. So basically, 18 students to a class, we would go up to 21 to a class, or 22 to a class, we would go up to 25 at the elementary level. So, so yes, we do have, we did structure some plans in order to do that if need be.
That's only after we exhaust, excuse me, that's only after we exhaust all of the funding that we receive from the state for class size, correct?
Yes, that's, that, yes, that's correct.
I think it's real important that we always have that in the conversation.
We were, we have, of course, structured to use all of the funding that we're receiving from the state next year in class size, which I think is 97, $98.3 million next year, we're slated to receive for class size. So yes, we will be utilizing all of those funds in order to do that, based on what students show up, where they show up. It may be necessary to flex out of the, of the hard class-by-class mandate in order to accommodate the number of students that are showing up. Okay, and would that have positive, positive effect on the budget in terms of saving some money? Yes, because we're not hiring teachers or employing subs where we would have done that before.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I, I think this is as good a time, if any, for me to bring this up. One of the things that we continue to talk about when we talk about class size, when we talk about the needs of the district, when we talk about the continual growth, growth of the district. And there's also been conversations around the fact that we have 10,000 extra seats out there that are not being used, and why are we talking about needing to build two schools if we really have 10,000 seats? But this is the fish capacity. I think it would behoove us as a board, if we had an explanation as to why there is a difference in actual capacity and fish capacity by the state, and we can actually look at what our needs are for the next five years when we look at growing anywhere from 1,200 to 2,000 students per year, because that is what the projection is. And I think that if we can give Dr. Graham direction, if all of you agree, that would be a piece of information that all of us would give us a greater overall understanding if we could have, like, Mr. Mora, Mr. Mora and Dr. Atkins and Dr. Decemore, Reggie, and all those people come and fill in all of those blank spaces on the canvas for us, so that we can have an understanding, so we'll know where we need to go, and if in fact, there's some urgency that we need to make some decisions right away. So, board members, do y'all agree that we need to have that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I think you have your direction, that we will have that at the next meeting.
July 29.
Yes, at the July meeting. All right. Continue.
All right. So just to recap, I wanted to make sure that we recap some of the things that we talked about before as well, to make sure that we were accurately communicating all of the things that are going to happen with the budget from here on out. So as we look at the long-term budget outlook, it is true that our indicators do continue to be positive. We have unemployment going down, we have tax roll going up. Our tax roll is estimated to go up about 6.4% this next year, went up 4% in FY '14. It's estimated to go up 6.4% for this next year, FY '15. We will receive the actual tax roll from the property appraiser on July 1, so we'll get the final number at that point, but our estimate is about 6.4%. And that's a positive indicator. Our, our levels of funding from the state have been increasing, albeit not as fast or as much as we wanted to, but they, they are increasing. So all these things are very positive, but we're continuing to be cautious within the budget. And we're asking people, all of, you know, department people, school people, to please be patient as we begin the crawl back to where our budget was before. The funding that we're receiving still isn't back up to 2008 levels, which was the highest, the highest levels that we were receiving in recent history. So we're still not back to that point. So even though these indicators are positive, it's not like we can totally jump back to exactly where we were in 2008, because our funding is not there yet, and the, the stability at this point is not there. So we're being very cautious in how we move forward in terms of, when we're looking at the additions that we're going to make to the budget, and there do have to be some additions based on our growth and what's happening. At the same time, we're trying to mitigate those increases as much as possible with other things that we're doing in the budget to mitigate those increases. So we're moving forward cautiously, although growth and support for the district is necessary as we continue to get larger. So we're going to try to keep that in mind and be as flexible as possible, but we'll continue to be very conservative as far as our outlook goes and as far as our approach to the budget in terms of how much we're adding in any individual year. We do want to make sure that we go over these details by the numbers. One of the things that we have built into the budget for next year is a 3% salary increase. So the numbers that we talked about within the budget, they include an assumed salary increase of 3% next year, which is about 13 and a half million. Now, how that will be, how, exactly how that increase will be structured remains to be seen, because it has to be bargained, but an amount equal to 3% has been set aside so far. Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did just-
I apologize.
Oh, no, no, no. I am assuming that the 3% salary increase will not be given to everybody who receives a salary increase as a result of a position change in the current budget cycle.
I, well, in, in the past, we have done that, based on, we, we have given it to everyone or everyone who qualified, regardless of whether some other salary increase came in the form of a job change or not. Based on whatever is bargained, if it's, if the salary increase is dependent on, like, last year was dependent on a satisfactory or effective or highly effective evaluation, as long as that individual had that and they were employed as of a certain period of time with the district, they received the increase regardless of a job status change.
I'm not talking about bargaining units.
She's talking about, I think, administrators and people on the org chart, I think is what she's referring to.
And, and I would be talking that too, because with administrators, again, that increase was based on an effective or highly effective evaluation, and so as long as the individuals had that, they were given the increase regardless of a job status change.
Yep, thank you. All right, continue.
Our, our school allocations-
Can we stop there for a minute? Does there need to be discussion about that? And if there does, I, I, are we, I, I need to ask, are we allowed, Mr. Martin, to differentiate?
Sorry, to differentiate, what way?
Salaries among administrators, if we say if they got a promotion, they can't get the increase? Are we able to do that?
Yes, except salary schedules, however the board wishes.
And I think, I understand what, let's say that we've got somebody that's, that's being bumped from a, a coordinator to a executive director, let's just use that. So that is, that's several bumps up, is basically what you're looking at. And I think, you know, that in itself would be an increase in how much you'd pay. We can't, we're kind of going back to reverting back to the conversation that we had with you and your, your contract, that we have to be able to justify this contract out there. And when you've got one person that they go to bed tonight, and they're, they're one position, and then they go to bed the next night, and they jumped up two or three positions, we've got to be able to look people in the face and justify that. So I think now is the time that we need to have that discussion. So you want to open the floor with it, Ms. Morgan?
Well, I just think we need to discuss whether or not people who receive a change in assignment in the current budget cycle that results in a significant increase in salary should be entitled to the 3% increase as well.
And I don't know how many people we're talking about in swift, you know, in position changes, because obviously, we have an empty chart without names on it, so we don't know who those names are going to be. Just off the top of your head, can you give us a ballpark figure of approximately how many administrators we are talking about that are going to be bumped up and would be affected with a bump up in salary as well as garnering the 3% raise? Can you tell us about how many we're looking at?
I can at this moment, because part of it is, some of these positions, you know, like the reclasses, we know who's going to go into those, and those are, those are, in most cases, minimal bumps. As far as the other positions, some of them are, some of them are going to be advertised. I mean, I'd have a hard time telling you right now, a couple of them I could, but overall, I'd have a hard time telling you who's going to be in those positions to tell you whether or not it's a bump for them, maybe somebody from the outside. So it would be difficult to give you a number. Now, I can, I can, I can guesstimate, and the, and I could certainly do that prior to the increases being given.
Okay.
That would be helpful. Maybe Amy's got a better guesstimate than I do.
Yeah, if, if I can help a little bit, the, the sheet that you have within the briefing material that lists every position change that's there, what you're really asking about is the, the reclasses that, that are for, out there for each individual. So when you look at that list, just at a quick count, I'm looking at 20 reclasses, okay? Some, some of them up and some of them down. Like, for example, one of the reclasses that I have in my area really is a reclass down of what's a vacant position right now. But when you look at each of those reclasses, it will show you what the position is, what they, what it currently is and what it's moving to, and the fiscal impact related to that change. So I think each one of those, I think, would answer the, the question that you're asking, I believe.
And I, but I think, if I understand, part of the question is, as Mrs. Dozier said, if, if we had someone who right now was a coordinator and they applied for an executive director position and got it, that's probably a bigger increase than most of the reclasses.
Oh, right, that would be different.
Yeah, I'd feel better, I can tell you that we can, I can get you that, once we know, but once, if the chart's approved and we know what positions we're going to fill, then when we fill them, which we will do as quickly as we can, then I can tell you, and I could do that before the 29th, tell you what the impact is, and then we could come back to this conversation, because we're not going to be, I don't think we'll be giving any increases before the 29th of July. I'm looking at Greg, because he's negotiating.
But I would have to ask, I would have to ask Mr. Martin, once we approve the chart, I don't know that we can come back and say who would receive the, the 3% raise and who wouldn't receive. We, we would have to make that distinction right away, would we not, Mr. Martin?
Well, I believe, and Dr. Decemore could, could address this too, I think that you would do make that distinction through the salary schedule by the position. For example, if there's a certain group of new positions that are added, you could designate in the salary schedule that for the, for FY 2015, those positions would not enjoy that increase, an annual increase. You do not, you do not designate the salary range until you adopt the salary schedule.
And we-
Correct, usually-
-approve the job positions without having...
The salary-
I'm having trouble with this.
Yeah, maybe, if I understood the question correctly, I agree with Mr. Martin in that this really is two separate actions. The one is the, this today that we're talking about is the acceptance or the approval by the board of the job descriptions and the organization. A separate step is the, is the approval of the salary schedule and the salary increases for each individual group. And the approval of the salary increases, at that point, that is when you are approving either, you know, the, the bargained increases with talc and spalc, and then also the appropriate increases for N and admin, and the conditions behind which each person or group will receive those increases.
Thank you.
And what I can tell you is, then, I can give you what you're asking as far as how many positions and what the increases would be prior to that, because we'll know who's in those positions.
Okay, and so-
We'll know what position they came from.
And Mr. Martin, what you're saying is, that would not delay us in making any decision this evening to move forward if we have a speculation due to the, to 3% on those employees that are being bumped up, one or two or three positions?
Yes, ma'am, that is a condition that you could impose as part of the adoption of the salary schedule at a later time.
Okay.
Okay, and then I just have a question. Dr. Decemore?
Yes.
When I'm looking at the chart and I see a reclassification, and I'm looking under the last column, Amount Approved, am I to assume that that's the difference between the salary that the person or that position is now receiving and will receive?
Yes, that's correct, but it is by the average, because remember, on, in budgeted terms, we work on the average salary.
Right.
So we're looking at average to average, the, so it may not necessarily reflect the impact to that individual, we're looking at the impact to the budget, because we budget on average salary.
Right. So, and, and I think maybe this was what caught Mrs. Morgan's attention too, but so I'm looking at amounts on the average, that could be as much as an increase of 19,000, or a decrease of 3,700, or an increase of 4,700. So I see that if someone had that kind of an increase in their salary that year, and then also enjoyed the 3% increase, if we're doing that across the board, comparing that, because these are already, you know, many of them are, are big salaries to begin with, and then comparing that with our teachers and support staff- and then comparing that with our teachers and support staff, they'll be saying, hey, to us, you know, wait a minute, we're getting 3% based on what we've been earning for the last six or seven years, and, and these guys are making triple figures and then getting an increase. So I think that's the, is that where you were going with that?
It's not so much the money, it's just, it's the principle and the philosophy behind it.
And it's talking to our people who are in the trenches, and not that, not that these people in the district office are not in the trenches, because they are, but I think that's what we need to be able to justify.
And again, we can give you more detail, position by position, what the increases would be, and then when it comes time to adopt the salary schedule, you can make that decision.
Thank you.
Okay. And then if you would just keep in mind too, that as you look at that list of positions, the salary schedule that it affects is on there, so, in that salary schedule column. So some of these are salary schedule N, some of them are Spalk, some of them are Admins. So there's a mix of those within there, okay?
Yes.
Amy, could you tell them what each, what the, we know that, we know N, can you tell them what each one means?
Yes, on the sheet, S is Spalk.
Right.
N is the salary schedule N, and then B is administrative.
Right.
I don't think, and if you see an I, there's, that means instructional. I don't know that there's any instructional on here, but-
There is.
Okay, so I is instructional.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. We're looking at the, a couple of things that we're keeping in mind in the budget as we go forward, and some things that are still question marks, is, you know, the legislature increased the number of schools that we have to offer, the extra hour or two, if they fall within what used to be the bottom 100 for reading, now is the bottom 300 for reading. So that, of course, is going to be an increased cost to the budget. Right now, we have set aside 2 and 1/2 million to cover that, assuming that we'll have five schools that fall within that category, and we got the five, remember, as we looked at it at that point, if we looked at it at that point, we would have had five. But of course, it's dependent on this year's FCAT scores, and we're still waiting on some word from the state to determine how many we have, if any. So that's going to be one of those things that's a question mark. And then we have the new digital classrooms categorical that we received from the state, almost $1 million that we received. We know that, that they're giving that to us in order to be able to fund some additional infrastructure and items such as that, that will support our technology across the district. So we're in the process of working with IT to write the plan and submit it to the state so that we'll be eligible for those additional funds. So those are, those are a couple of new things that entered the mix for our budget for next year. So as we look at our budget overview in the general fund, we're currently budgeted at about 810 million dollars. Again, as we discussed, that includes the 3% salary increase across the board, and we'll have some additional conversation as to how that, that lay, you know, how that transpires as we get closer to that point. The weighted FTE increase we received from the state was only 578. Now, the last time we talked, remember, I said that number to me is really, is really, really low. So I think that a proration across the state is very possible. So in other words, when the state funds the whole entire state at a certain FTE number, and then that number of FTE really, in actuality, is more than what they have planned to fund us for, what they have to do is end up cutting the funding in order to cover all of the additional FTE that then comes to pass statewide. So I believe that because our number for weighted FTE is so low, and you see statewide, that number that they're funding for increase in FTE is really quite low, I think, we're probably going to be set up for a proration in the future. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay.
We always want to talk to you about the reserves, because we know that that is an important point, an important point for the board. We've got $20 million set aside in board contingency. That's 3% of the new revenue that we anticipate we will receive for next year, and remember, that piece is the, the low mark, the 3% is the low mark that the, that the state recommends that each district has. If you fall below that, it's an issue and a problem for the state. And then even beyond that, we have 26 million that's set aside in that line that we've been calling board priorities, and that's that additional amount of money that the board said, hey, look, that's the amount of reserve that we have right now, we don't want that amount touched, and we want that to stay there. So those two numbers in total, the 46 million dollars, that adds up to 6.7% of the new revenue that we anticipate coming in for next year. Also within our reserves, beyond that 46 million dollars, we also have a $2 million reserve set aside for FTE shortfall. We set that aside in case we don't make the FTE that we are planning for, for next year, because the number was so low, I mean, I don't think we're going to need that. I think what's going to happen is we're going to need to take that money and allocate it out to schools, because the kids are going to be there.
Right.
Okay, so it's either going to be one or the other, we're either going to send it back, or it's going to go to schools, one or the other. If we talk, take a couple minutes to talk about capital, because that's one of the things that we've talked about so much over the past several months. Again, we don't have any schools built into the five-year window. Now, we do anticipate that we're going to need some additional seats for additional kids that come, but we have no schools within the window. So one of the things that we've, that we've talked about before, and we'll have to continue to talk about, is how do we accommodate the additional kids without the schools built into the plan? Either we are going to build some in, or we're going to take some other alternative steps, and we'll continue to talk about that. We scaled down the rotation and maintenance dollars this year, of course, because of those dollars in capital. As I mentioned before, we did get that increase in tax rolls, 6.4%, which is a good thing. However, with all of the, the other pressing needs in capital, what the dollars that we need in maintenance and rotation, the dollars that we need to pay for debt service, which is about half of the tax roll dollars that we expect to take in, of course, we still have many, many capital pressures, and we've had separate briefings that talk just about that. We did get PICO revenue for the first time since 2011, so we anticipate that that for us was going to be about $1.3 million for next year, so that's one bright spot. We've got $42.8 million in debt service, and that does reflect the cost that we believe that, the cost that we've received from financing this year. But based on what John was just here talking about, we'll have some additional costs, additional savings within our debt service for next year, based on the refinancings that we are just getting ready to embark on. So that number should get a little bit better as we get into the year. However, we still have tremendous pressure within our capital that at our July 29 briefing, I think we're going to take some more time to talk about, and then we'll continue to talk about it throughout the next year, because we've got to come up with some alternatives as to how we're going to deal with that over the next several years.
Right. Ms. Fisher has a question?
Yes, okay, maybe this is a good time for me just to mention this, and you and I have talked about this, and I've talked about it with Dr. Graham, but as we look forward, we need to have a plan, and we know that our projected growth is not going to decrease from all, you know, all that we know at this moment.
Correct.
And, and I think we've talked about the potential of other ways of getting money that will help us to build the schools that we're going to need. So if we were to think about, again, levying either a half penny sales tax increase, we have a process that we have to go through, you know, we have to have a resolution, notify the supervisor of election, educate the public, and then decide whether or not we would collaborate with the county commission and any municipalities to raise that then to a penny, which may or may not help us, because we'd have to decide on how that's divided. So do I have that right from you, the way you educated me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I know that at, from our union representatives, I have some information that the National Education Association does provide support and help with that through what they call TEF, Taxes, Economic Development Policies, and Funding for Schools. And that would be available. So I think that, I would like to ask my colleagues at this time if they would be interested in exploring that, to see what that would mean. We may not have a lot of time to get it on the ballot this year, which we could do at no cost, you know, with the supervisor of elections. But I think if we did educate the public, that we, we might be more likely to have that referendum passed. I had a conversation with Commissioner Keiker, and he said, we haven't taken anything like this to the voters in about eight or nine years, and last time it did not pass.
Overwhelmingly.
Overwhelmingly. But I think, I think that we need to still look at the possibility and the potential, and, and because the economy's on an upswing, we may be looking at a possibility, if we took the time and had the support, to correctly educate the public. So I think all I'm asking is, Lynn Mallars from the NEA has information available for us, so I think I wanted to know if you would be interested in reviewing that information and determining then, after we review that, and have staff look it over, whether that would be something that would be beneficial to helping us if we do decide to move forward.
So what you're saying is, you are not looking at it being put on the ballot, because I believe that we may have already exhausted the opportunity to have something else on the ballot at this time.
In a few days.
Right, so there's no way we could do it this year.
I'm talking about in anticipation-
Right.
-of next year, because we've bought ourselves this year, this time this year, with the, taking advantage of our opportunity to increase the class size at some levels. And so if we were well-prepared, well in advance of next year, and we used the help that is available to us at no cost through the National Education Association, I think that might be a good-
Now, when you say help, exactly what kind of help are you referring to?
Well, it is a, there are lessons, and it is a, NEA will send people down to, to talk to us and give us lessons and show us how we go about-
About passing a referendum?
Yes.
That's all over the place. NEA may have that, but we also have that right here in the state of Florida.
Okay.
And we have, we have reached out, it's not that I'm saying that NEA has, they might have a bright idea somewhere. I think, let's let staff look at it and see what staff says. Staff has already been looking at-
Okay.
-different opportunities throughout the state, because we've got people all over the state of Florida. For instance, the last Thursday, when I happened to be up at FSBA, the lady from Sarasota came up, and she grabbed me and she hugged me, and she says, catch what we passed, with 78%? And I said, congratulations!
Yes, because they were well-prepared.
But think, no, it's not that they're well-prepared. They've got a whole different population than we have. That's the problem. And every time anything has gone out in Lee County, it has overwhelmingly been defeated. And I think we need to, I think that's, that's a good information, if you've got the information. I think we ought to send it to staff and let staff look at it.
And that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah.
Should we do that?
Let staff look at it and see what staff says.
And that's exactly what I'm asking you. Okay, so do we have a consensus on that?
I think we do.
I'll pass the information on then, thank you.
All right. You want to continue?
Yep. So when we looked at, when we look at the next steps that are coming within the budget, and there's several things that will transpire within a pretty short period of time. So we're going to, we in the budget department will finalize balancing the budget, and, and we're pretty much there in terms of what we need to do. We'll continue to bargain with both of our union groups and settle on salary increases, and we're hoping that that too will be in the, in the near future. We'll get the certification of the tax roll from the property appraiser on July 1, as I mentioned before, and then following that, no later than July 19, we'll get a recalculation of our millages from the state based on that new tax roll. So we'll make the changes to the budget of, you know, on that final calculation from the state, and then the superintendent by law will submit her proposed tentative budget to you all on July 24. So you all can expect to receive a pretty thick packet of budget information from the superintendent, no later than July 24, outlining her proposed tentative budget. At that point, and we're talking about, we talked about the job descriptions earlier, one of the agenda items on the docket for tonight is the approval of those new and revised job descriptions. You'll approve the tentative budget in July, that date right now is set for July 29, so the proposed tentative budget will come on the 24th. On the 29th is the, is the tentative budget hearing. We'll continue to do adjustments to the budget, and they'll take place in July and August. And in the briefing in August, we usually detail to you what any changes have been, if they're significant, and talk about what we plan on bringing forward for the final budget. And of course, the approval of the final budget will take place in September. So that is what you can expect for the budget coming forward within the next couple months. And with that, I will take any final questions you have.
All right, board members, do you have any questions of Dr. Desmore?
No.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, I have a question that I'm going to ask you this evening.
Okay.
I'm not going to ask you that question now, I'm going to give you the time to prepare and give me the answer tonight, but I'm going to ask you one simple question when we get ready to approve the reorganization chart tonight. And I want to be perfectly clear that we both have an understanding of what I'm asking for.
Okay.
I'm going to ask you what the total cost of the FY 1314 organization chart was, the total cost of that chart, or 1314. Then I want you to be prepared to tell us what the total cost of the 1415 reorganization chart is.
Okay. So when you say total cost, you mean every, every, the cost of every department position within the organization in '14, proposed in '15, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Because I, I know that there has been misstatements out there about how much more this organization chart is costing, and we need to put all of that to bed. And I think that that answer will do that. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
No.
All right, then, if you're all through-
I am.
As always, thanks a lot for the in-depth information, and we will now move to public comment. I will begin over here, is there anyone over here that wishes to speak? Raise your hand on my left side. Anybody on my right side? Seeing no one, we'll move to board member comments, and I will begin with you, Mr. Armstrong.
I have none.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
I have a bunch, sorry, guys.
That's okay.
I sent you an email about board development, and asked, and said that I would, would poll you at the briefing meeting today. The first item is a visitation and training by Dr. Blanton and Andrea Messina on Wednesday, September 22. And then the second thing would be to commit to a March 2015 Master Board Forum. And I said in my email that it's very difficult to schedule, so I think it behooves us to get on the calendar, because this is, board development is time-sensitive. So-
Okay, yeah, and I want to thank you for doing that. I think it's a long time in coming, and I am ready to be available on any dates so that we can proceed with board development.
I agree with Ms. Fisher.
Okay, this is what I would ask, because you're asking for a date in September for board development, now this is not-
Let me make clear.
Okay, you're talking about, it's not board development, you're not talking about master board training, that doesn't actually begin until March, but you are talking about a component that would be called, it would be a board development component for our board, not towards the master board training.
That is correct. September would be considered a technical training for our board development. But we would be able to schedule with a new board in November for, to begin in January with a session that qualified for master board training for February as well, even before we get to master board in March.
Well, this is what, this is what I would ask, because there is an election in August, and we will know that there will be two new board members in September, and whoever those two new board members are, and this has been a common practice that we've done in the past, we have invited those new board members to participate in anything that might affect them in the future. So I can support this, only if we would also invite, in the event that there are new board members, that we invite them to participate as well. Because, you know, we already know in one seat, we're going to have a new board member, and there may be others, but I think the courtesy that we have shown other board members that were elected in the past, I know there are people sitting right here at this table that we have invited to participate, so I would want to offer that same courtesy.
No problem.
I concur, I mean, I was offered the same courtesy.
So we'll put September 22 on the calendar, as well as the March dates, and I guess I will communicate with the candidates that they need to have those dates available going forward.
I would ask that, Ms. Benzinger, if you would make sure that that gets on our calendar and we get time starting for that.
Okay.
Okay? Go ahead.
The second thing that, we've sort of had this thing going around amongst us, but not directly to each other, about who communicates about what. So I thought I would just throw out there, my understanding- So I thought I would just throw out there, my understanding from the workshop in November was that when we got questions from the public, each board member was...had the opportunity to respond with a copy to the superintendent. But the question came up whether the board chair should be doing this. And so I just want to make certain that we all have the same understanding about how we handle constituent emails. So am I on the same page or am I on a different page?
Well, as elected officials, I'm going to weigh in, unless anybody else wants to weigh in first. As elected officials, we all have the opportunity...if somebody sends us an email, we all have the opportunity to respond. I have a pat response that I give to everyone, not a pat response, but I talk about their issue, but then I send it directly to the superintendent, which is the appropriate thing for us to do. We have had in the past, if there is an issue that, let's say, is a district-wide concern that comes into the office through, let's say, a letter and not an email. You know, correspondence has changed so much when...with the use of people using email. And now, it's a lot of times, I get a copy of something or I get sent an email, and you're sent that email too, but I don't know that you're sent that email, because they don't have, you know, us in the line. So I'm going to respond, because that's a citizen. As the board chair, a lot of times, the board chair responds on behalf of the board with a...you know, with an email that basically, if it's an issue that is district-wide, and I'm trying to think of something, let's say, something like discipline code, and it would affect all schools. The board chair could respond to that, and then the board chair would copy all board members. In fact, they should be copying every board member on their email, that they are...when they act in the capacity of the board chair, every board member at this table should receive a copy of what they've said.
Ah.
And that way, that gives us the opportunity, whether or not to respond or not. Because if I see that the board chair has already responded, then...and that one little catchphrase is, "On behalf of the Lee County School Board, I am responding to your request, your concern," or whatever. I am telling you that I am responding for everybody. And some board members have even gone so far as to say, "So that you want...you know, you will not receive redundant emails. I am replying on behalf of the board," or something like that. But that email that that board...that that board chair has sent out better go into every board member's box, because they have an obligation then to let us know that they have responded on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Okay.
The next thing, I sent Dr. Graham a request for a little analysis...not a little, an analysis of FCAT and EOC courses, final exams. And Mrs. Flarus has generated some data for me, which I very much appreciate. The one piece that I would like to see that I haven't got yet is the gains compared for ethnic groups. Okay. And then the final thing I want to bring up is FSBA. I have some questions for the board, and I apologize for just getting the document out yesterday. But beginning with the session report, if you had an opportunity to read it, I refer to the keynote speaker, Stephen Teske, from Clayton County Juvenile Court, Georgia, whose topic was, "When Did Making Adults Mad Become a Crime: A School Justice Partnership to Improve Graduation Rates and School Climate?" And I guess my question is, would we, as a board, like to engage community partners in an exercise that would take us in this direction, or engage them in a conversation, or direct the superintendent or her staff to do something? Because I think this is...it was an incredibly impressive presentation about the community assuming responsibility for the health and well-being, mental and physical, rather than just the school district or just the courts. So if you've had an opportunity to read that brief blurb that I put in there, I'd just like to know what your reaction is. Mrs. Fisher.
Ms. Fisher.
Okay. Well, having had the opportunity to be present for that presentation, I got really excited, because, you know, I've been talking a lot about our Code of Conduct and out-of-school suspensions. And his whole presentation really directly correlated with what I was talking about. So I've actually fashioned a report also. And I would be much interested in having the superintendent and staff and us be involved in those conversations. And if I remember, Judge Teske said that his school board members were directly involved. And how much of an impact on the community, and the data that he had was phenomenal about how many kids who were not out of school in the community getting involved in juvenile justice, because they're robbing houses and selling drugs or whatever they're doing. So I think we really have a responsibility to look at that and to continue to partner even more with our law enforcement and judicial systems. And so I'm very glad that you brought that up, and thank you for doing so.
Mr. Armstrong, do you want to weigh in on that?
You know, I actually...pretty much everything that Ms. Fisher said, I completely agree. I mean, it's...that is something that, you know, actually is a little bit dear to my heart, something that I feel that, you know, we need to have more of a partnership with the law enforcement and start looking into these things a little bit more closer. And I'd be more than willing to, you know...I know you said you was coming up with a report yourself, Ms. Fisher, and I'd be...I'm actually looking forward to reading it.
Thank you.
Well, I thank you for your extensive report. In fact, I think I mentioned it to you yesterday. You're making me look bad here, kid. Because my reports are not nearly as extensive as yours are. And I know you were very kind...
Just when I'm excited about something.
You were very kind, saying, "Oh, but your handwriting is so much more legible than mine, and you make copies of all your notes." Well, yours is so professionally done, and mine is handwritten. So anyway, but I do thank you. And I did take the time to read all of these memos on the FSBA conference, because I was not able to be there. And I thank you and Ms. Morgan both, you and Ms. Fisher both, for attending on behalf of our school board. And I think any way that we can partner with any group, whether it be a public entity or a private entity, to try to better serve the students that we have, I think that we need to do that. And there have been times in the past when we had very good relationships with groups like Judge Teske was talking about. So I certainly think that it is something worthy of us doing, and I would say, take the ball and run with it and get us going.
I don't...did I get this report? Because I don't...
Yeah. Weren't you copied? You got a copy of it. You're copied on it.
Okay.
Maybe it's still in your inbox. I think it just came out yesterday.
It just came out yesterday. Yep. Was it from you, Ms. Morgan? Because I'm caught up on yours.
Yeah, you were copied, and Mr. Martin was copied. Both of you were copied on it.
Email. No, paper.
Here, pass it.
Okay. They also send it out by email as well.
Yeah, you've got...you should have gotten two copies.
Okay. I've not seen it yet. Thank you. So thank you for that. And then another memo I sent you was about the executive director...the Board of Directors meeting.
Right.
And there were three legal issues that came up, and I wanted to ask questions. First had to do with Senate Bill 850 pertaining to the expansion of the corporate tax scholarship program. The FSBA is filing suit, and the question is, does this board wish to take any action or adopt a resolution to support the FSBA suit on the corporate tax scholarship program?
Mr. Armstrong?
Oh, and I was going to ask Mr. Martin if he wanted to address this to us just a little bit.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. Senate Bill 850, as Ms. Morgan explained, expands the corporate tax scholarship program. It also establishes what is termed personal learning scholarships, basically a voucher, somewhat similar to the opportunity scholarships for private schools that passed the legislature, I believe, in 2004, and was declared unconstitutional by the Florida Supreme Court in 2006. This particular scholarship is designed a little bit different. It's...the eligibility is to students with disabilities, with certain disabilities. But it basically has the same characteristics as the opportunity scholarship, in that a parent of a student with certain disabilities can choose to receive the FTE that that student would earn as a result of being served by the school district. And the parent can use those funds to pay the tuition at a private school or to purchase other services or therapies. In the 2006 ruling, the Florida Supreme Court found that the opportunity scholarship for private schools violated Article 9, Section 1 of the Florida Constitution, which requires the legislature to make adequate provision for a uniform, efficient, safe, secure, and high-quality system of free public schools that allows students to obtain a high-quality education. The Supreme's Court said that the opportunity scholarship for private schools violated that provision in two aspects. First, by not providing that quality education through a system of free public schools, but rather providing that option to do it through private schools. And secondly, because it would not provide a uniform quality education in the context of the legislature and DOE not having any authority over those private schools that would be serving those students, and the private schools not being held to the same standards as the public school districts in the state of Florida with respect to issues such as curriculum and qualifications of instructional staff. So I certainly would recommend to you that, as FSBA goes forward with a legal challenge of that bill that the school board joint in that, I believe it would be in your interest to do so. In the past, the FSBA has mounted these types of lawsuits in the past. And when they have done so, the process that I've seen generally is for them to put together a legal team to assess what the cost of litigation will be. And at that point, contact school districts, informing them of what their contribution would be if they wished to participate, and presenting a model resolution for the board to adopt, become a party in that case. So I would anticipate that that would occur over the next few months. Though it might be helpful, I guess, to Ms. Morgan now to know if the board is supportive of taking that action, so she could communicate that to Dr. Blanton possibly.
Yes, I support that. Mr. Armstrong?
I do as well.
And I do as well, because we...being a member of FSBA, one of the things that we have always realized is the strength that there is in numbers. And when we have a lawsuit like this, it really doesn't do a lot of good if it's one organization out there and it doesn't have its membership behind it. So, I mean, we could go ahead right now and pass a resolution at the next meeting, saying that we're in supportive of it. But that might be a little bit too premature, because by that time, we're probably going to have a resolution, I would imagine, from either Ruth or from Wayne. They will send one out to us. So if that be the case, I think all of us have agreed that we'll go ahead and proceed with a resolution, if in fact, that's what they send to us. Okay? All right. Now, your next thing?
The next thing was the Lamontis versus Lee County School District lawsuit that has reached the level of the Florida Supreme Court. And the Executive Committee of the FSBA voted to...and with the...and the directors of the FSBA voted to join the suit with the district, with us. And so my question is, does this board wish to formally acknowledge the action taken by the FSBA and the fellow boards of education?
Oh, absolutely. I think we need to reply to them and thank them on...you know, that would be...the chair would send something on behalf of the school board, or you acting as the chair would send something, thanking them for their willingness to join us in this lawsuit.
Okay.
I could just make one other suggestion there. Please excuse me for interrupting.
Please.
The Florida High School Athletics Association also submitted a brief in support of the school district's, Lee County school district's, position in that matter. So I think might be also appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then finally, charter schools. As you know, that there's a standard contract. The FSBA is looking for a test case to file a lawsuit. And they're also asking districts who have charters to provide discussion about what might be a model contract instead of a standard contract for submission to the Department of Education. So I guess the question of whether or not...we don't have any charter cases at this point, do we, that are with respect to the contract?
We don't have any matters in litigation at this point, no, with respect to charter schools. And the standard charter school contract has not, at this point, been adopted by the State Board of Education.
Oh, okay.
This is in response to legislation that had passed in '13.
Right.
And DOE started the process of developing a standard charter contract at that time, put it off for a time, but now has initiated that process again, including initiating rulemaking. From the schedule that's been posted, it appears that State Board of Education will probably be taking action around November to adopt that standard contract. There are also constitutional issues with respect to a standard charter contract, because it's the school board that constitutionally has authority to operate, control, and supervise all free public schools in the state of Florida. And by adopting a standard charter contract that basically dictates the manner in which you're going to supervise these charter schools, which are public schools in your school district, that infringes upon the school board's constitutional authority. So I do believe, you know, there's also consideration by FSBA in the same context of challenging the constitutionality of that product. We really won't know the nature of what that challenge should be until the actual contract is adopted by the State Board of Education and the rules put in place to implement it. So again, I think that's something we want to carefully monitor, what FSBA's action is. I would recommend the school board taking part in that legal action, if and when it occurs. With respect to comments on the charter contract, Dr. McCullers had been monitoring that process carefully and did give me notice that there was an opportunity to submit comments to the proposed standard charter contract. He and I worked together. I provided some comments, he prepared some, and he put together the document that has been submitted on behalf of Lee County School Districts. Dr. McCullers has that, would be happy to share it if anyone has interest in that.
Okay. And then that leads into my last question, which was, apparently, the school board attorneys in the consortium have been talking with Mixon about a lawsuit. And I guess there's some conversation about school board attorneys attending the consortium meeting in September. And I guess my question would be, have you been involved in those conversations, and would you be planning to attend if we get to the point where we know something substantive about where the state's going?
If it's board's desire, I'd be happy to attend. But no, I've not been involved in any such conversations with...
We know they need your legal expertise.
Thank you. The Florida School Board Attorneys Association, as opposed to the school board attorneys that would be giving advice to members of the consortium, have discussed this issue. And there certainly was consensus that the standard charter contract has the potential to violate the constitutional provision, depending on how the rule and the charter contract ends up being adopted. But no, I've not had that conversation, nor with Mixon and Associates.
Well, I might suggest, if the board agrees, that once we see the consortium agenda, if it looks like this is going to be on the agenda, perhaps you might hold that date open so that you can attend with whoever attends the consortium meeting? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And...
Is that it?
I hope so. That is it.
Wow. All right.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
I think I'll reserve mine, the rest of mine, for this evening. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to do a little bit now and a little bit tonight. I want to thank all of you for supporting, having that issue brought up, so that we can be brought up to speed on our fish capacity opposed to our regular capacity for our seats. I look forward to having that discussion in July. Also, I want to thank publicly Ms. Morgan for attending the FSBA Board of Directors meeting. As you know, I was not...the last minute, I had to cancel due to the fact that I had an ill husband at home, and he had had surgery, and he did not want me to leave him. So I couldn't go anywhere. So I thank you for attending that and representing the Lee County School Board for that. I want to also congratulate you on being selected as the Secretary Treasurer for the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards, which this means that in another year, you will be the president of this organization. So congratulations. It is a... It is a wonderful step that you have taken here, and I hope I didn't speak out of turn when I told them that you would be willing to take that position.
She had her name down already.
Well, they asked me when I was up there, "Will she do it?" And I said, "Yes, put her name down. She'll do anything I tell her to." So I was laughing about that, but I knew that we had discussed you possibly being a leader in the future, and you were interested in that. And so I'm just, I appreciate the fact that you were doing that, and I know that, again, will make Lee County shine throughout the state as we have in the past. So thank you for that. And with that being said, we'll now go to board attorney comments. Mr. Martin, you have a legal minute for us?
I do, and it appears we have some time today.
Boy.
And the subject today, if you recall, the last time we had an opportunity, I discussed with you the requirement for a competitive selection process when the school board purchases products or services. Today, I wanted to talk to you about the exceptions to the requirement to go through a competitive selection process. Florida statute allows the State Board of Education to adopt exceptions to that requirement of competitive selection process when the character of the items render competitive bidding impractical. In applying that authority, the State Board of Education has adopted Rule 6A-1.012, which provides exceptions, waives the requirement for competitive selection procedures for certain services, including professional services such as artistic services, lectures, auditing services, legal services, appraisal, and health services. It also provides an exception for educational services, including educational tests, textbooks, computer software, and instructional recordings. Additionally, there's an exception for informational technology. There's also no exception for insurance coverage, that being coverage of the school district rather than insurance coverage for individual employees. And finally, there's an exception for regulated utilities and government services. So with respect to those exceptions, though, there's not a requirement to use a competitive selection process to make the purchase, in some situations, it does make sense, and there's not a prohibition against using a competitive selection process. In some situations, it still does make sense to do so in order to obtain the best price for those services or products. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's comments. Dr. Graham?
Just briefly, I've been asked to remind everyone listening and everyone at the table, if you've yet to download your Lee County Schools app, you just go to Lee County Public Schools, and it's the black and gold one. And we are using it, and we want people to have access to it. The fire drill issue that's been in the news, we are, we are still working through the documents that we have, and I will tell you that the number that's been reported is the best information that was available at the time of the report. It is inaccurate, and we're working on the accuracy, just because we need to know. But we are having a meeting tomorrow, Mr. Martin and I and staff, regarding the policies that we have in place. And so I'll be bringing back a recommendation in July to address, and having, if the chart gets approved, and having safety and security, all those. This is really, the timing was interesting of that issue coming up as we were talking about this department, because it really is about people, no one really having ownership of that process. It was a process issue as much as anything. So we are addressing that tomorrow, and I will be bringing recommendation. And it's interesting that Senate Bill 850 came up, because I just wanted to tell you, we had every intention of bringing you the student progression plan today. And we pulled it because Senate Bill 850, it was up and down whether or not the governor was going to sign it. It's the one Bob Sera called "The Train." At the end, everything that was left got thrown together.
They do it.
Yeah. And so there are multiple things in there that we have to sort through that are going to impact diploma issues and other things. So we will be bringing the student progression plan on July 29th. We wanted to start that process today, but we just didn't want to bring you something that we were going to just have to go change then. And it did just get signed. So we're working through that bill and what the implications are to progression plan at this time.
In regard to the fire code issue, or the fire drills, could you bring us what the state language is for mandatory different drills that we have, and then, so that we can have both as we move forward, so we can...
Well, I'll have all that to you before the 29th.
All right. Very good. Is that anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Board members, I want to thank you. Good meeting. And I, our next meeting is this evening at 6 o'clock. We have our action meeting. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.